I guess they did answer.
Morning, everybody. This is it's eight thirty in the morning. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Humboldt County Commissioners to order. It's Monday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And would you first thing order of business? Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, a country, and a family.
Next item is public comment. Public comment is does is designed to allow the public to address the commission on items which are not currently on this agenda. However, we're unable to make a decision or comment on those items until they are agendized at a later date. Does anybody in the room have public comment?
Yes, sure I did.
Yep, go ahead, Commissioner.
I think we need to stretch this a little bit. This is Commissioner Haas. It's come to my attention that we've hired a new employee for the technology services slash IT. This new employee does not live in Humboldt County, so those involved in the hiring process, which is, I would imagine, the county manager, assistant manager, HR, the Humboldt County technical technology services director, and the DA's department have decided to give him the use of Humboldt County-owned vehicle to drive daily to Winamaka from his residence outside the county at the cost to all go to the Hum- to Humboldt County. There's no known directive for those for these hires to give use of a vehicle. The only one that came up was for the Sheriff's Department. If we do this for one employee, we'll have to give a vehicle to every employee. They have given the county vehicle to the new county employee to use if they do not exceed twelve thousand miles per year. They live approximately hundred and thirty-three miles one way from Winamaka, which would put them at thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two miles. I have also discovered that the rest of the employees in the department were given personal use of Humboldt County vehicles to use at their own discretion and to take home. If an employee has been given permission to use the Humboldt County vehicle at will, and if there is an accident, it's our liability, Humboldt County's, and we would be responsible, and we would have to cover the employee under workers' comp. Don't know whether that's that would be done by the insurance company. Then there's the cost of maintaining the vehicle, gas and oil, mileage plus paying all other expenses occurring in the normal process of paying the employee. I want an investigation into the violation on the part of all those that were involved in giving permission for this to happen. They need to be held accountable for the decisions and expenses incurred. We will need to we possibly will need to employ outside legal counsel. Thank you.
Okay, any additional public comment? Any public comment online? Not seeing any public comment online. We're gonna go ahead and move to item four, which is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes. Go ahead to start with the September ninth, two thousand and twenty minutes. But you have a chance to take a look at those that are in your box. Have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented from for September ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries. We're gonna move on to October third, two thousand and twenty-two minutes. Do we have any additions?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
As Commissioner Cherry is missing from this meeting and Commissioner Haas and Hill abstain as they were not on the board at the time, can action be taken on that set of minutes?
Sounds like we would need to table them.
We need to table those?
Yes. The ones for for two thousand and twenty, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, I was trying to send my iMessage to Wendy, and she wasn't picking up on it. Sorry.
I was trying to get it figured out, too.
And so Commissioner Hill didn't abstain.
I did abstain, yeah. I was quiet there. I was a little slow on the
Okay, so we have
I do need to abstain from that. I was not present at that
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and move back to that item then. And for the September ninth, two thousand and twenty, we'll go ahead and table that item until the next meeting. Move on then to the October third, two thousand and twenty-two. Any additions, subtractions to those minutes? We have a motion?
Commissioner Hill, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes for October third, two thousand and twenty-two.
A motion on the floor, discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item five, which is approval of our expenditures. Those circulating now, did we? Everybody's had a chance to take a look at those in our packet. Is you have any issues, concerns with the expenditures? Have a motion?
Having reviewed the expenditures, this Commissioner Hill, I would I would motion that we approve the expenditures through October third, October third through October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
A motion on the floor, any additional discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, item six was Humboldt Museum request to decorate the courthouse for holiday season. This consideration discussion possible approval of a request from Humboldt Museum Executive Director Dana Toth to decorate the courthouse for upcoming holiday season.
Hello.
Morning, Dana.
Excuse me. For the record, I'm Dana Toth, Executive Director of Humboldt Museum. I'm here just to give you some information about the haunted tour, but also to kind of encourage candles in the windows for the courthouse also, and and also allow us to project an image on the face of the courthouse. So the main question I'm asking is to hold off on the Christmas decorations before we have Halloween. Wait till after Halloween. Last year, we did Haunted Bridge Street. It was a little bit different, and I'll explain that to you. But last year, we went in to set up for Haunted Bridge Street, and there was Christmas decoration. So we really played off the Nightmare Before Christmas theme with the courthouse. But this year, I'd like to have a clean slate, so we could have that nice projection on the face of the courthouse, if possible. So and then we also have several battery-powered candles that are on timers. We'd like to place in their windows around the building that are they'd be visible from the outside. So they would kick on at dusk and then shut off about four hours later, automatically cycle through. We did that last year. They were up for a few weeks, and I think it looked pretty good. We also did that in the Hubbard House, too, when it was still standing. So that was, I know, nice to see, too. It's a little touch. So about the event itself, Haunted Bridge Street is it's more or less its second year. Last year, we did things a little bit different. We did guided tours with limited ticket sales. So we'd limit it to sixty people that could go on those guided tours. Our biggest complaint was that we limited it, that more people wanted to participate than we could allow. So our remedy to that was to open up the event space to allow as many people as that want to attend to enter that event space and mingle with our stations and our characters who will be in costume and playing the roles of either particular people who were here or generalized characters. So like a laundress or a newspaper person, we don't have them playing particular characters, but there are a few who are particular characters. So we have closure from First Street through Fifth Street, so four blocks of Bridge Street. The intersections will remain open. Tomorrow, the Chamber of Commerce will be requesting closure to extend to two P M. Right now, we have it closed starting at four P M. to nine P M. So we hope to see that extend, so we can get our vendors in a little bit earlier. So that way, they'd be able to participate in both the business trick-or-treating, which starts at two P M. that day, and stay up for our Haunted Bridge Street event that starts off at five P M. that day. So one event will roll into the next. The reason that we're doing this is really to bring attention in a fun way to downtown. Some of the history, some of the stories, some of the remaining historic resources or built structures that we have, we'd like to bring those to light in a fun way that it's not dry or boring or in a textbook or a lecture format. People, once they approach the event space, will be able to come up to our event table and either scan a Q R code with their phone, take a picture with their phone, or get a paper copy of an event layout map, so they'll know which characters where, which buildings are being interpreted, where the interactive stations are, where the vendor booths are, where the kite or cruisers cars will be. We have six projectors we'll be putting out. Three of them are large, three are small. They'll have historic images of Bridge Street and Winamaka that people can view. And and these will be recyclable, so we could use them for other downtown events as well. We can change the slides out, too, so we could make them themed for holiday events, not just everything Halloween or creepy looking. And that is something else, another point, too. This event is, I'm telling everybody, it's more of a light show than a bloodbath. So we're keeping it family-friendly. Of course, it is Halloween, and we are dealing with some elements of a little bit of, you know, drinking and gunfights and prostitution, but we're not doing it in a overtly graphic way. So, you know, we're not changing the history. We're presenting it as the Wild West frontier where it really were in Winamaka. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
I think it's a great idea. Yeah.
Yeah. Did you see the dates on all that? Did you?
The well, the dates for it's actually Saturday, October twenty-ninth. It's the last Saturday before Halloween. It should be a very Halloweeny day. It sounds like there's trunk-or-treats going on, business trick-or-treating, and then our event in the evening, and and one's just right after the other after the other.
And just a note, Dana, we will have activity in the courthouse that day because early voting is going on.
Okay, somebody will be here.
We'll be here till like about six in the office.
Okay, great.
Five for the voting.
That's good. That's good.
Don't scare the voters off.
That was my quest. Only question I had is that, do you anticipate any any conflicts with any of the normal business that we'd be having right on here?
I think they'll have access, so they can come around the other side of the road, but the intersections
The intersections remain open, yeah.
And we'll make sure the candles are lit.
We have lots of batteries, too.
So we may look like ghosts by that.
You might be a silhouette passing by.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So we need a motion. They have a request to decorate courthouse.
This is Commissioner Haas. I would move to approve the request from Humboldt Museum to include the courthouse in upcoming holiday decoration plans.
Yeah, a motion on the floor, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Cherry, before Dana runs off, we still haven't got title to land and stuff that the city had given us to the museum. I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. We've been to several meetings and haven't been able to get that done yet.
Okay, is that something you'd like to place on an agenda?
I think I just did. Not that we placed it on the agenda, but
Okay.
As long as you guys are aware of what's going on, we've been they've made promises and stuff, so we'll give them a little more time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, follow up with that. Just one more thing, too, about the Haunted Bridge Street. We will have Q R codes, about thirty of them placed around town, and they're not all directly on Bridge Street. There's a few, like the Grammar School, the Martin Hotel, so a few on Railroad Street, too, so people could take the self-guided tour as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll move on to item seven, which is a Comptroller's Financial Report. And this is Humboldt County Comptroller Gina Rackley will provide an overview of current conditions with respect to Humboldt County revenues expenditures for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, just July one through July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Last week, I sent out the quarterly report from the first quarter, but I'm just gonna go over some highlights from that and answer any questions if you have any. So for the first quarter, our revenues were at five million five twenty-six sixty-six, and for two thousand and twenty-one, that same period, were five million five oh one five oh three. So just a little slight increase of about nineteen thousand. Expenditures for all funds were eight million nine eighty-two eight twelve, and for the same peri- pay or period last year, they were seven million three ninety-eight four sixty-five. So that is about a million and a half increase of expenditure year over year, but we did have a lot of R T C projects that were completed in the first quarter this year, and of course, negotiated merits, cost of living, and insurance stipend. So just a few little highlights here. In the general fund, our revenues are up two hundred and twenty-eight thousand sixty-three dollars over the previous year. It's lots of different things. The property taxes were down, and that's actually just a timing issue, the centrally assessed taxes that are that come from the state. We usually get them in September. We didn't get them until October this year, so it'll be reflected on the next quarter report. And then in the intergovernmental function, we do have the new revenue for the opioid settlement, which was about three hundred and five thousand dollars. The committee has been formed and just in the early stages of that to determine how these funds will be spent. Our contract charges are up one hundred and eighty-five thousand four eleven, and that was due to the agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad. All other revenues in the general fund seem to be trending just normal. Expenditures are up in the general fund, four hundred seven thousand two hundred and two. We had some special departments, projects in the buildings and grounds that was completed, but the main contributor to that is negotiated merits, cost of livings, and the insurance stipend. Road Fund revenues are down a little bit, seven thousand dollars, so I would call that basically flat. That's, again, due to the July C T X, though, if we would have received that seat, our C T X, actually, sorry, that was down seven percent, and I that's pretty much the driver of that. Expenditures in the road fund, they're up one hundred and forty-four thousand, but Dawn did you approved him to buy a couple of large expensive items. There was a new Peter Belt, and then also a new Ford F- one fifty. We already discussed the R T C fund. Six judicial district revenues, they're down sixty-eight thousand. Again, centrally assessed taxes is that, and expenditures are up seventy-nine thousand, and that, of course, is due to the merit cost of living and insurance stipend payments. So event complex revenues are down eighty-one thousand. We are seeing, you know, last year, room tax revenue and stalls and everything were up really, really high, and we are seeing that come down for this quarter. Room tax, arena, stalls, RVs, every all the rentals, building rental. And then, of course, he's completed a couple of capital projects out there. So that was the quarterly report in a nutshell, and hopefully you guys had the time to look through the whole report that I sent out last week. Then last week, Dave forwarded me an email. We became aware of the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, known as L A T C F. So the American Rescue Plan appropriated two billion dollars to the Treasury to provide payments to eligible revenue-sharing counties and tribal governments. The funds are allocated and determined the same way Pilt is. So so many acreage of federal land plus three hundred dollars a person, population, et cetera. So I went and read on the on the Treasury's website, if an entity, one of the eligible entities, does not complete the request of funds by January thirty-first, then all unrequested funds will then again be allocated and redistributed. So if we hadn't have claimed it, it doesn't matter. Our kids and grandkids are gonna be paying for this debt, so why not have some of this money at least come here? And so I did put in for the first request, the second tranche will be distributed in two thousand and twenty-three. Humboldt County will receive two distributions in the amount of three million nine ninety-nine thirty-six thirty-two and thirty-two cents each, so for a total of seven million nine hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-four cents. I've set up a revenue account in the Pilt in lieu of tax fund. That way, the money is in the general fund. It's it'll go directly into that that Pilt Fund. We do have to do a reporting requirement. Every year in March, we'll have to report how these funds have been spent, and there is only one exception. We can't use it for lobbying. It can be spent on anything else. So my suggestion is, given that we have so many large and very expensive projects looming on our horizon, that we keep that money in the Pilt Funds fund, so that it stays separate until which time the commission decides where they would like to see those what project or projects they would like to see that nearly eight million dollars be spent on.
So can that be used for matching money towards grants?
Yes. Yep, anything except for lobbying. So so that that was a bit of a surprise, and
I got an email from National N A Co. asking about that and about our involvement in that, and that was what I sent to Dave. But
Yeah.
Well, I I think that's, you know, I agree with you. I think our kids and our grandkids are gonna pay for this, and we might as well put some sort of benefit on the on the ground that everybody's gonna be able to use.
There is two billion dollars going to governments and tribal agencies throughout this country, one way or another. So we might as well, if we're gonna have to pay for it, we might as well get our piece.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And then lastly, we just were notified last week that we are being audited by PERS. So on top of our regular fiscal audit, we also have a nice big PERS audit going on. So that's what we're doing in our office.
When is that gonna take place?
Right this week. We have one week.
Oh.
We have to have it to them by Friday. Yeah.
Nice of them.
Yes, so we're scrambling.
Is that based on a on a on a complaint, or?
No, they do this randomly. I think it was about five years ago when we got our last one, and so they just randomly pick thirty-five employees, and we have to pull all of the they give us a specified date period of time. Fortunately, this year, it was from February to July two thousand and twenty-two, so it wasn't like it was very far. But we have to pull all time sheets and all of the reporting and everything together for the audit in a week. So really counting on a lot of the department heads and that are affected to help us out and get this done, and do payroll this week, and a big commission expenditure run. So we're a little busy, so.
So I'm just curious, what is so what is the so what are they gonna do if we say we don't have time?
Oh, we'll get it done. We'll get it done.
I'm just curious. I mean, with that short of a turnaround time, I mean, that's that's a little heavy-handed, I think. And bottom line is, is I mean, everybody's got a job to do, and
Yeah, when I talked to Andre on Saturday, we were discussing the timing, like the state knows we're all in the middle of our own fiscal audits that are required, and then to put this on top of us in a week. But we'll get it done.
Crazy.
We'll get it done.
Well, thanks, Gina.
Thank you for your quarterly report, too. It was really nice to have that.
Yeah, it was great.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight. This is from the assessor's office. This and this is assessor office going and and the G I S department will update the commission on the department's strategic goals and plans. Morning.
Morning, Andy Heiser, Humboldt County Assessor. I just want to introduce Jessica Smith. She has been here almost a year in my J S department. She has pushed the envelope in this department as far as where she would like us to be and where we can go with it. So I'm just here to kind of introduce her and turn this over to you guys. And then if you have any questions, there are there are some bigger picture things that we probably need to discuss in the next upcoming six months to a year, but I'll turn it over to her and let her have the floor.
Hi, this is Jessica Smith, G I S tech, I guess, for the record, if I didn't say that. So I don't know if you guys are aware of what G I S stands for, Geographic Information Systems. If you guys are aware of pictometry or online interactive map, I'm responsible for maintaining and updating the records and everything on there. So most of my a lot of my time is spent updating and maintaining the assessor's data, but I also help maintain the mining claim database. I draw easements, road files, address points. I work with the road department. I update the points for dispatch services, update emergency fire district maps, and any other taxpayer maps that's requested of us. I've also realized that there's a need for outside stakeholders within the county. Some of the other projects that I've been working on include mapping the Paradise Valley Cemetery. I've been working with the museum and collecting data for like historical purposes. There's a big push now to get our road files to a federal standard with the NINA nine-one-one model. And we've opened communication with this Humboldt County School District to help them with their data, possibly bus routes, possibly any other confidential data that they may need. they may need, and I, I create lots and lots of maps. So the G I S department, a lot of other counties, and you guys can do your own research on this if you don't believe me, but a lot of the G I S departments are being taken seriously for community development and decision-making. Basically, if you have a question, you can pinpoint it to the where the question is, so you can use maps to visualize a lot of your data. I just wanted you guys to be aware of my efforts with this position, and also to realize that we're working with people outside of the county jurisdiction, possibly. So, yeah, the city, museum, school district, all the departments are all basically stakeholders that can use this service that we provide. So I've included a five-year strategic plan, which I've kind of roughly made a plan for where this department can go, and the things that I've been working on, and things that we could possibly apply, so that's pretty much it. So if you have any questions.
Yep. Commissioners, any questions?
I do have a question. So you touched on including G I S and economic, economic development and planning. Do you have any ideas on how we could incorporate that, or what we could do differently to incorporate the G I S into our, our planning, I guess?
Um, a lot of it depends on very specific brainstorming, and so if you have very specific questions, and if I have the data to show, so if we, we have tabular data, like, you can map income, you can map expenses, so long as you have a place to put it. So like, if you had expenses in Grass Valley versus expenses in Winnebago or Paradise Valley, you know, we could, we could create heat maps, we could create different kinds of maps that would show, you know, maybe what kind of questions you want answered. So basically, it all starts with the question you want answered, and then you have to find the specific data and then go from there. And that's kind of a vague.
Yeah, and I like, I, I like where you're going with that. I like that idea. I think the, the more groups and, and departments that we have involved in that sort of stuff is, is going to be a better outcome for everybody.
I'm just going to jump in, Andy Heiser, Humboldt County Assessor. So what, what are, she came to me with a five-year strategic plan, and I went, oh, well, let's go, let's, let's figure out how to do this. And she's done a lot of additional webinars and stuff with Esri. Esri's the kind of parent company of G I S, and, and so she's, she's really wanting to expand this because we want to be the central hub of the data. So take, for instance, the, the Grass Valley, and I've talked to Dave about this a little bit, we, we could have had some of that data into our own G I S department, or, or we can add it to it, the potential sewer lines, and, and we've put the water lines in, I believe, already for Star City. We have, we have Gold Country, too, so we don't want data from over here and over here, and, and we want to be the main hub for, for everything. We have all the city infrastructure in already, we have a lot of the county infrastructure in, Dawn does a great job working with this department. So we just kind of want to be the main hub of all this, so when you guys say, hey, we need X, we can say, oh, well, we have that, so we can provide that to you. With the road, the gentleman who did all the S R two-four-seven-seven stuff, we have that now. So as we grow this database, with the more and more information, we can do income, and where do the, where, where do the income levels live in Humboldt County, and how can we change or ratify some of this stuff? So the, like she, like Jessica said, the main question is, we need you guys to provide us with the questions. We're going to work hard to get all the data, and then we can produce heat maps, or we can produce bar graphs, or whatever you guys would like to, to present this data, and then we can really, I think, capture it and, and hone in on the, on the problems and maybe potentially solve some.
And if you guys need more examples, or if you want to see more of what we're trying to present to you, just, you can come down to the assessor's office anytime, and we can, like, walk you through, like, I don't know if you've seen our interactive maps, but we have all that, the unofficial Humboldt County roadmap that you can zoom in, and you can click on a picture and see a picture of every part of Humboldt County. I don't know if anybody's seen that map, but it's on the Humboldt County website. I think a lot of people go to the Humboldt County website just to find the G I S interactive map. We have, the last year, we averaged fifteen thousand or so hits to our map. We go about forty-eight requests a day for the map, but it, it's, it's a pretty big demand, so it could be applied and expanded on in a lot of different ways, so that's all. We just wanted you guys to be aware.
I have, I've got two questions. First one is, the G I S layers, I know this kind of started slow and has built on, on top of itself, but as the G I S layers come together, does that include a lot of the historical records as well? I mean, going back, you're talking about the transportation map in the county and whatnot, and, and I, obviously, the transportation map looked significantly different in nineteen thirty than it does right now. Did you capture that data yet, or is, or not?
Um, so that's kind of why I've started, I threw in the easement data and the historical data. A lot of, so this department has been, what, twenty years in the making? A lot of that old, old data would have been in the recorded documents, and so whether or not, like, old historical maps and stuff like that have been applied to the database, probably not. It, it, it would just take an act of digitizing, and that's another one of my goals, is to work with the recorders to pull maps as demanded, and then we could put them on and add that to our layers, and just add that, you know, other dimension into our data, so we understand where we were to where we're going.
That, where I'm going with that has to do with the R S two-four-seven-seven effort that we paid for here recently. Obviously, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, the requirements under FLITNA for R S two-four-seven-seven require us to establish whether or not that was a right-of-way or a road going back prior to nineteen seventy-six. And so one of the things that we're going to have to develop is, on each one of these files, for each one of those roads, is whether or not, you know, whether we have a G I S layer to actually determine whether or not that was a road, or whether it was a two-track or whatever, because that's going to be part of the packet that we're going to be able to submit for R S two-four-seven-seven quitclaim title to those, to those roads, so, and I just, that's the reason I asked the question, because that's going to be a need that we're going to see coming.
Yeah, I was not aware on the specifics of that, but going forward, now that I know that there's a need for that, that's totally a, a thing I could work on, is start pulling up those old map files and adding it onto what.
Yeah, yeah.
That was a Jerry Okens file, yeah. And then if you go online to our assessor's map page, it's the unofficial road information map, but I pulled all of his data, and it's available on there, so.
And a lot, and a lot of his stuff, Andy Heiser, for the record, a lot of his stuff, he, he has notated in there where he found that information, but a lot of it is just from our website, so.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I'm, that, that's something we'd have to discuss on the, you know, a lot more in depth, but, but we do have that capability. That's the only way we can access that file is through G I S. I know that, you know, maybe wasn't clear at the time, but, and I, I didn't know about it until very recent, but Jessica's in control of it. I have full faith in her. She's doing a great job, so if there are projects that you guys are looking on, looking at, doing, please reach out to our, to my office, to Jessica, you know, before maybe we have to go out to another client or a vendor to, to pay them for the service. We have a lot of the services right here, and if you look around the counties, this G I S is growing. It's, the state's going to get their own G I S department here, they should get funding for it this year, they're hoping, or, well, next year, through legislation, they're hoping. So there, there's a big push to collaborate all this data together. We met with the superintendent and, and talked about attendance, heat maps, and, and great heat maps, and, you know, that is confidential, that won't be out to the public, but there's a need, and there's a presentation factor. That's just really, really neat about this, and she's done a great job. That's, that's.
And I also like to mention, mention that there's a pretty big push in the G I S world for converting all the road files to this N G nine-one-one federal safety compliance. A lot of other states have done it, and they've fulfilled that. Nevada's one of the last states. I don't think it's gone to the legislature yet, I'm not sure why, but a lot of the other counties have already done this, and it just adds a federal standard for our road files if somebody calls, you know, from Pennsylvania or South Africa, and is able to direct people to where they're going based off of how you present these road files. And we can discuss that more if you guys are interested later, so.
Sure, I, I, I see this whole thing, that, and this is going to bring to me my second question, but I think this, this has a potential for really getting a lot larger than it is right now, especially if the state's getting ready to start throwing together a G I S, set of G I S layers.
Yeah.
As well, and I, I applaud the fact, I, that's always been the mistake, I think, because the feds had their G I S, we had our G I S, state had theirs, and whatnot, and nobody was talking to each other. And I think that over, having an overlay and having a standard by which we can put these layers together is going to benefit everybody.
Exactly.
The, and that's, that's my second question. Is it, based on your five-year plan and based on what you see in the future right now in terms of your work program, is it, is it looking like we're going to be a, a one-man show, or is it something we're going to be looking at additional?
And, I'll take, sorry. Then that's why we're here, Andy Heiser. So that, by doing this, there is going to be growth, and that needs to, you know, we, we will come before you guys and ask how you would like to do that. I've had discussions with the city manager about a cost share, I've had talks with the superintendent about a cost share, so these are other, you know, local governments, or, so are we, as a county, going to provide this service for, for, you know, and take, take that upon ourselves, or are we looking to bridge out and do cost shares? That's, that's the big question. That's why I kind of wanted to put this, have Jessica and I come up in front of you guys, is that is where this is going to lead to, and we, it would be nice to have a plan, so when we do need that, that, that next body, we kind of know the process and how we're going to go about it. We can get in discussions with these other, you know, city and, and school, and then where do we go? The, you know, we're here for the public, we're here for the taxpayer, that's what we do. So when they need a project, how do we, how do we charge? We, we have some of that stuff, but, you know, do we need to in, in increase charges to the public, or are we still providing that as a, as a benefit to them, which is, you know, I, I think we provide it as a benefit to them, but do we charge the museum? Do we charge, you know, so that's, that's the plan that her and I have discussed. Now we're bringing you guys into it to kind of put your heads together to figure out how you would like our office, my office, to work that.
Yeah, I, it's, it's, I guess we can need, kind of need to move along, but I, I'm concerned that, you know, this is going to, this is going to turn into something, this could be really big. This could really turn into something quite large. I, I, I think about Washoe County's G I S program, and I, and I've talked with him over a number of issues having to do with, that spill over from Washoe County into northern Humboldt County, and, and I was, it blew my mind how much, how, how big that program got, and, but it's, it's not, it, it, like a lot of things that start out slow, it's, you don't realize the value of it until you start utilizing it and start realizing what it, what it's, allows us to gather very specific data very quickly. And, and I, I just would say to the board, we are right on the front side, and we're going to be talking about this thing here today, but we are right on the front side of some really significant changes being proposed by the Department of Interior on our, the land that we administer in Humboldt County, and, and those kinds of questions are going to be coming at us rapid-fire, between Waters of the U.S. and between, you know, the, the grazing regs that are, we're reviewing right now, and, and sage grouse issues and those types of things, those kinds of questions are going to be quick-fire and at us very, very quickly, and, and I would just, I say that because we're going to need that kind of capability, so I'm saying.
It's a very powerful tool, and we have the capabilities to use it, so.
Yep, yep. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions?
Not today.
Yeah, there will be questions.
There will be questions.
Thanks for, thanks for coming by and, and bringing us up to speed, and we need to be talking later, we will, so, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item nine. These are set to for public hearing. This is consideration, discussion, and possible approval to set to public hearing for a future date to be determined by the county clerk for the following, and we're going to start out with A, item A, which is R H dash two-two dash seventeen, and this is a zone change request submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of B Wilkinson and B Calhoun at E T A L to change the C commercial zoning designation to M three open land use zoning designation on property located at one ninety-five U.S. Highway ninety-five McDermott, Nevada, A P N zero-three dash zero-five-nine-four dash five-five. And I think I just jumped that. Yeah, I got it, thanks. So we need to set two for that.
I would, I would make a motion to set to R H dash two-two dash one-seven. Zone change is read into the record by chair.
Motion on the floor, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move on to item B, R H twenty-two eighteen, zone change request submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of B Wilkinson and B Calhoun, E T A L, to change the C commercial zoning designation to M three open land use zoning designation on property located off of U.S. Highway ninety-five McDermott, Nevada, A P N zero-three-zero-five-nine-four-five-four. Do we have any discussion on that or a motion?
I'd make a motion, R H two-two dash one-eight, zone change. It's approved to set to as read into the record by chairman.
Motion on the floor, any discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries. Item C, R H twenty-two nineteen, zone change request submitted to the, by the Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Don L. Sacarata to change the C commercial zoning designation to M one industrial zoning designation on property located north of I-80, south of the railroad tracks, A P N oh-five, oh, oh-five-five-five, oh-six. Any discussion on that? Motion?
I'd make a motion, we go to set two on R H two-two dash one-nine, zone change request is read into the record by chairman.
Motion on the floor, any additional discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries unanimous. Item D, R H twenty-two dash twenty, zone change request submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Marigaz Propane L P change, the C commercial zoning designation to G C or General Commercial zoning designation on property located at thirty-four-hundred West Winnebago Boulevard, West Winnebago Boulevard, A P N ten dash zero-one, zero-two dash zero-one, and zero-two. Any, any questions on that?
No. This, Commissioner Hill, I would make a motion for a set two, up for a zone change of R H twenty-two dash two-zero, as read into the record by the chairman.
Okay, we have motion on the floor. Any additional discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries unanimous. Item E, R H twenty-two twenty-one, zone change request submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Blake Lambert and Gail E. Lambert to change the C commercial zoning designation to M three open land use zoning designation on property located at two-four-nine-nine-zero-north U.S. ninety-five Orvada, Nevada, A P N zero-three dash zero-four-two-one dash one-seven. Have any, any concerns with that?
Commissioner Hill, I would make a motion for a set to public hearing for a zone change for R H dash twenty-two dash twenty-one, as read into the record by the chairman.
We have motion. We have motion on the floor, additional discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries unanimous. Item F, RH-2222. Zone change request submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of PWD Winamucca LLC to change the C commercial zoning designation to GC or general commercial zoning designation on property located at 3575 and 3545 West Winamucca Boulevard, West Winamucca Boulevard, APN 10-0071-006, 13 and 03. Any, any questions on that? Concerns? Motion?
Commissioner Hill, I would make a motion for a public hearing for a zone change of RH-22-22 as read into the record by the chairman.
And we have motion on the floor, any additional discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 10. Planning Department approval and finally, final division of land into large parcels. This is consideration discussion, possible approval of a final division of land into large parcels submitted by Desert Mountain Surveying as agent for FL Properties LLC per NRS 278.472. The site is located 2.5 miles southeast along the Hollow Road, assessors parcel 05-0201-06. Morning.
Morning, Commissioners, for the record. Excuse me, my name is John Milton with Desert Mountain Surveying and I represent FI Properties LLC. We're here today to present the final map division in a large parcel. We have a memorandum from the planning department outlining the map and all the requirements that we've met. And this was approved by the Regional Planning Commission on the 8th of September.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I have one. John, looking at all of the things you did in here, what, do we ever go into water, water rights, water availability for any of these big projects like this?
No, it's not a requirement by the state. These are all 40-acre parcels. I think if we were in the groundwater basins like Paradise, Winamucca, Grass Valley that have restrictions on them, then this would come into play.
So this is, this is a completely different basin than?
Yeah, this is, would be.
It was just a question.
Desert Valley, Lower Desert Valley.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Comments? Motion?
Make a motion to approve the final division of land into large parcels submitted by Desert Mountain Surveying as an agent for F1 Properties LLC per NRS N278-472. Assess partial number 05020106.
Hey, motion on the floor. Additional discussion on the motion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries unanimous. Thanks, John.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, move on to item 11. Public Works Department approval of Pearl Camp perpetual right-of-way. This is a request for approval of a perpetual right-of-way grant with the BLM for Pearl Camp Road and to allow the Public Works Director to sign a grant document.
Good morning, Commissioners, Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. So Pearl Camp Road is a road that connects from Leonard Creek Road to Knott Creek Road over the top of, what is that, Jackson's? It's no Pine Forest.
Yeah, it's right to the cutoff between.
So, it, it, it's a well-used sportsman access. There are farmers and ranchers use it on a continual basis. This is a road that we've had a temporary easement with BLM for a number of years. And this is just, this opportunity just makes it permanent.
Don, is that, was that request from us or was that from the Bureau?
BLM.
BLM.
Yeah, they brought it up to us and I said, absolutely, let's, let's move forward, so.
Was that, was that a, a request as part of a package or was that just the Pearl Camp Road itself?
It was just the Pearl Camp Road.
Yeah, just kinda curious, there's a number of roads out there that could, you know, I wonder about.
Yeah, I've been talking with Julie McKinnon with BLM quite a bit and, you know, bringing up various things and, yeah, there's, there's some, yeah, issues that we're gonna have to address in the near future.
Yeah.
With, with some of our roads and the easements or lack of easements that we have with BLM.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you just go down the range into the Black Rock side of it from Battle Creek all the way down, Paiute and all that, you know, there's a number of roads are just like this one that, that are really key roads from the west side into the east side and are utilized by not only the sportsmen but also by folks, you know, that live out in that country and whatnot. So I just, I'm curious about what, you know, whether that's a program that they're engaging in it finally, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, honestly, if it's something they're, you know, looking at on that.
Do we know how long it's been since, I, I'm guessing, you know, we were kind of a rotating easement on that? But has the BLM had any equipment on Pearl Camp, for instance, any, any?
No, because we've always.
We've been doing it all.
Yeah, yeah, for as, as, as long as I can pull, pull up, like 15 years, we, we've been maintaining it.
Okay.
So.
And, and the BLM's doing everything south of that then?
So we care, we, we go all the way down to Paiute with Leonard Creek Road.
Right.
And then everything to the west of that would be BLM.
BLM stuff.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I just say for the record, this is, this is a big deal. This is a big road and it's, it's, it's a no-brainer. We need, public safety perspective, access perspective, it's a, it's a key, it's a key artery.
Will this, will this increase any maintenance or will it still be about the same?
No, we've been maintaining it for 15-plus years and we're gonna continue. So, no, no additional costs to the department or the county.
Okay. Any additional questions? Motion?
No, this Commissioner Hill, I, I would agree with the chair. I think this is a key thing that we, we continue to have access to this and we, we make it legal and, and this is a good step to keep it open, open access. And not only for the public but for, for the county to access for our work that we need to do in there too.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
Okay.
Tricky, yes, this Commissioner Hill, I would make a motion that we, that we grant the request approval for a perpetual right-of-way grant with the BLM for the Pearl Camp Road and to allow Public Works Director to sign the grant document.
Okay, motion on the floor. Additional discussion? Opposition to the motion? Motion carries. All right, item B, presentation, Humboldt County Public Works Director, Don Kalkowski, to update the board on road projects within Humboldt County. No action will be taken on any matter raised on this item, so.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. So, I guess, I guess the first thing that's been taking quite a bit of our time is the corn harvest in Kings River and the potato harvest out off of Dutch Flat, Eden Valley. We've had our crews out there just, basically just watering roads as much as they can just to hold the roads together because of that, that amount of traffic going through there. So that's been working pretty good. I think the potato harvest is coming to an end. I'm not sure where the corn harvest is. I know they're still moving a little bit, moving north as they, or south as they come out of the valley. So, I think they have a few more pivots left for that, for the silage, I guess. So we're still out there, Sand Pass, we've completed grading out there. The Denial Crew's been working on Knott Creek and Alder Creek Roads. And then, also continue, moving this way on Jungo, trying to get that all buttoned up and in decent shape before the snow flies. Got a lot less traffic out there, so it's actually holding together a lot better than it has in previous years. So, and then we're, so this, we've had a couple complaints out by Ticoni area and I know Dave's aware of those, he and I have talked about it. We actually had a crew come available today, so we're out there mowing today. So, so that should resolve some of the, some of the issues out there. And then I know Dr. Jensen brought up the Norma Road out by the sand dunes this morning. As Dave said, it's not a maintained road. I don't know what you guys, what your appetite is for dealing with this. I'm gonna talk to Gina and see if this is something that we might be able to fund with the ARPA funds to enable these kids the access to schools and, and whatnot. Just to, I guess, further separate from the road funds and using those funds for that. So, it's one thing, I, I just need to talk to Gina and see if it's, it's possible. Cause I know we had some savings on a couple of projects that were ARPA funded and, and from what I can calculate, I'm roughly looking at about $15,000 to fix this thing correctly. Fix the issue correctly. It's only a block that we're really fixing, so.
So do we have a list of, of items that could possibly fall into that category for ARPA funding having to do with, as you pointed out, access issues for?
Yeah, I gotta talk to Gina on that and see if that'll, see if that'll fit.
She's compiling then something for us.
Well, I, I had just texted her right before I came up, cause I forgot to ask her when she was sitting behind me. So I'll, I'll give her the whole scoop, cause she didn't hear Dr. Jensen's spiel on it this morning. So I'll give her the whole logistics on it and see if that's something that'll fit into the funding options for the ARPA.
Yeah, I think that's an item that we could probably visit later on, but it sounds like, you know, with the additional ARPA funds that are out there, we could probably take, we're, we're gonna definitely need to put a list together of priority list of things and how we're gonna put those funds to get to use, so.
This, Commissioner Hill, this is not a road we, we're completely out of our maintenance structure, right?
It is. It's, it's off of Delaney Road, which Delaney is, is our maintained road. And we maintain this portion, it's the first, the first street off of Delaney from US 95. And it's, I don't know, it's maybe 100 feet from the intersection where this, and it's a sand dune, basically.
Yeah.
So, you know, my, my repair strategy is basically gut that whole 150, 200-foot section about three feet deep and then rebuild it with, with larger material that'll hold together just because it is a sand dune and.
Is this something, and this may be for the DA's department, but is this something that would come back before us, before we approve on these funds or is this something?
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just have some concerns. I, I'm all for getting these kids to school, but I, I have some concerns with precedents and, and different stuff. So, I guess that would be the time to address that.
Agree, and I, and I do too, and that's why I was trying to think of some ways that we could, you know, separate that from the road funds.
Okay.
And looking at the ARPA stuff, cause I don't wanna set that precedence. We get one or two calls a week.
For sure.
From people living on unmaintained roads that want us to maintain them.
Yeah. Yeah, we just gotta.
Dug my heels in.
Gotta be real careful with where we're spending our, our taxpayers' monies, for sure.
I don't disagree with that. I, I think though, in the, in the case of this particular one that was presented to us by Superintendent of Schools this morning of RTC, I think, you know, the, the nexus on whether or not, you know, we jump into that would, had to do with kind of a handicap access is what it was. And I think if there's a, if that kind of a nexus is involved and it's a one-time thing that involved in ARPA, and those are, I think, some of the things that, you know, we need to, need to be looking at, so.
There is, this Commissioner Tipton, you, I talked to Dr. Jensen over the weekend too and there's several things that, that weren't brought up. And one of them is that at one time they did have someone in the area, a maintenance agreement where the people paid into it. And they quit paying, so the person quit maintaining the road. And I look at it and I think, boy, your, your heart says we need to do something. Morally, you think you need to do something, but boy, you open up a can of worms and you look at it. The, the way we're structured, I, I don't see how we can do it. Another way may be is if the school district paid the funds to the county to have it done.
Wendy Maddox, purpose of the record, I just wanna caution you. I know this is not, this item is not on the agenda. So, I get a little bit nervous when a couple Commissioners start weighing in and we start having a discussion. So, I just would ask that if you wanna have a discussion on this, that we agendize this item.
Sorry.
Sorry, Wendy. No, it, it's, it's good conversation, so.
This is Commissioner House. How many roads that, when that subdivision was put in, it was up to them to bring them up to our standards.
The only roads that we maintain out there currently, so there's Delaney, Artemisia, Lambert, and I believe Summer Wind Circle are the only roads that we maintain. Every road that's brought into the system since I've been here, and we've brought quite a few roads into the system, the abutting property owners have all expended monies to, to bring these roads up. And then once they bring them up, we accept them, comes before you all to approve that and then it's into our system and then we maintain from there. I'm just, you know, another thing that concerns me, like Commissioner Tipton was mentioning is, you know, if we, if we start doing this now, are these people that have expended all this money in the past bringing these roads up gonna come and want reimbursement? So, I mean, I, I don't know how that'd work legally and I guess we should probably stop here.
Let's put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
I think we should.
I think we should agendize that into the future for sure. And then we can have more of an in-depth, in-depth conversation about it. I think this is gonna be an issue that's gonna be, gonna visit us more than once, for sure, so. Don, do you have anything else?
I don't.
Commissioners, anything else for Don?
No, thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. So, I'm gonna take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Well. Uh, this is a consideration, discussion and possible approval. Of a letter of support to Marigold Valmy Expansion, reference NVN. Zero six five zero three four dash three eight zero nine. Uh, one seven nine two, uh, NVW zero one zero point three one. Um, and that is reference to the uh, the Marigold Expansion, so it uh. Did everybody have a chance to look at those uh, that correspondence in our packet? Everybody squared away with that? We can, it doesn't look like we have anybody from Marigold in here, so.
The only question I've got on it, Jim, is why, I mean, I understand. That they want a letter from us to approve that, but we don't have to do anything with it. It's their property. They.
Sure.
Can do whatever they want to do.
Oh, absolutely, and I and it's a good question, uh, Tom, I, the. From where I sit, um, this is an economic development driver is what it is, and when we start talking about. Uh, in some of the, in some cases, I'm thinking about um, uh. Some of the other mine expansions, so to speak, um, many times there's a, there's our letters stacking up in opposition to those. Whether they be from, you know, Nevada, yeah, somebody within Western Watersheds or something along that line, so. Uh, you'll, you'll, so. A lot of the companies ask for the governing body from those counties to weigh in on that, at least on the front side of it. So that we can kind of counterbalance the the negatives to the project and uh, and so it's. Um, and so w- we have ha- always had a a policy, at least since I've been sitting here, we've had a policy of. Well, and welcoming folks, businesses and those, especially some of the major economic drivers for the county to come in and. And uh, present to us and in some cases ask for, and like in this case, ask for a letter of support. Yeah.
Uh, this Commissioner Hill, um, I guess just to weigh in on that a little bit, um, I I I would be in support of of a letter, although it's not required. Um, I I think they are a huge economic driver as with all mining companies, um. Lot of our citizens are employed by them, a lot of our local businesses are supported by them. I think it's. It's it's a big part of what we do in Humboldt County, so I would be supportive of a letter. Yeah.
Have that in form of a of a motion?
Sure. Um, I would make a motion that we approve a letter of support for Marigold Valmy Expansion, uh, reference. NVN zero six five oh three four dash three eight zero nine slash one seven nine two.
Motion on the floor. Uh, any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries. And move on to item thirteen. Um, this is a consideration discussion, possible approval. Of a Second Amendment for the Professional Services Agreement between Humboldt County and Andy Reber for cons- uh consulting services with respect to Wild Horse Borough. Natural Resources, Desert Land Entries, Public Land Use Planning and Land Use Planning Amendments, LUPAs. The Federal Land Policy and Management Act, FLIPNA, Sagebrush Focal Areas, SFAs and other public land issues. The Second Amendment to this contract will be uh a new not to exceed amount of a hundred and fifty thousand and ex. Extend the agreement for three years and ending in November sixth, or excuse me, November ninth, twenty twenty-sixth. Anyhow, um, I'm going to go ahead and uh. Kick in, uh, we, you're probably aware. With a lot of the stuff that has come up, you know, we're looking at one, a big one right here. Um, we've asked uh, Ms. Reber to to actually weigh in on our behalf. Um, and and I I might add, if you, after you take a look at the work that she did on that, it's just, it's impeccable work. Um, she, um, and I, bottom line of this is that we were bumping up against her her contract. Numbers, so we wanted to make sure we extend that. Uh, I did at least. Uh, I feel that um, uh. With like a lot of the other professional services within this board, I, we just don't have the capacity to do this kind of work. Um, I I, as you probably gather, I'm a, I'm a little bit biased because I've had a chance for years to see the work she has produced. Um, I deal with a lot of folks in a lot of arenas um on environmental issues and land use planning issues. And um, I just, I have to say, she's just, she is um, she's a gift to this county and um. Uh, any rate, I, as you probably gather, I I just think it's a, it's with, it's a worthwhile expenditure for for our funds. Uh, the downside, if we choose to um. Allow the federal government to have its way with the public lands with us, with regard to us. Is so profound, we just have to, we better take a a proactive approach to it in my view, so. Anyhow, that's my long spiel on that and, yes.
Mr. Shammon, I just want to weigh in with the amount and kind of my thinking on the contract, so. I have been here working for the county for five years and Andy Reber has been doing work for you longer than that. Um, I remember when I I was sitting in this chair looking over contracts, I think it. One came before us, the one that is going to expire in November of twenty twenty-three. Um, rather than keep coming back and doing an amendment or an additional agreement. Um, I just wanted to capture what you guys have been spending on her over the last three years, so that's where the hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand comes in. Um, I can't think, I want to say in the sixty thousand range is where you are right now on the contract?
Right, her current contract, which was amended back in June, uh, she's about thirty-eight hundred dollars shy of hitting that sixty-five thousand dollar mark, which was the.
Perfect.
Not to exceed amount.
So that would be included, of course, in this hundred and fifty thousand, and since the agreement ends. In November of twenty twenty-three, this would allow you both to put um an extension of money or an addition of money on there as well as an extension of time. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Um. Uh, I think, um, I I think the long term, I think this is a a contract probably benefit this county down the road. We've got a lot of issues that are, um, this was one that jumped out at me that I didn't see coming. Um, we've got, um. This was the first two chapters of that. We're gonna, we, we've got a lot of uh hard work left in that to do. Um, I I would say that um from a public lands perspective, uh, the National NACO is looking at her real closely right now as well for some of her comments. With the Western Interstate Region, uh, having to do with some of the same issues we're dealing with right here, so she's probably going to be dipping her toe in the, in the water on that as well. Uh, she has, um, she has a a soft place in her heart for Humboldt County, always has, and um, she's living in Elko County now. When we first employed her, she was in Oregon. Um, she's now in Elko and she's actually actively looking for a home here in Winnemuk because she'd like to live uh here. Um, so. Um, at any rate, I I I throw that out on the table, gentlemen, and and uh. See what your comments are as well.
Is this, this Commissioner Tipton, I've had the uh. I've had the pleasure to work with uh Andy Reber for. I guess ever since I've been on the commission and I've found her work to be very, very well done, always prepared, always knowledgeable. She's always available for a phone call even on a weekend, so. I I think it's something we need to go forward with and uh extend the contract uh. And if she uses all of it, we know that uh, there's probably a reason for that, and if she doesn't need to use all of it. We'll still have it sitting there.
Yep.
For another extension.
This is Commissioner House. I believe that we should do this. We're gonna have to do more than this. Uh, something that was brought up. At Central Nevada Water Authority that they asked if if every county had a water resources plan. That was what I was going, you know, was looking into, and evidently we have one that's get, that has got started.
Yeah, she's, we've completed it.
Okay.
Yep, and Andy helped a big portion of that.
We may need to to look at that again, just, you know, with with the new stuff that's coming out with the water. Uh, I didn't know whether Humboldt River had discussed it.
Yeah, we have, you know, and and different stuff, so. Yeah, we amended our master plan uh with that.
Okay.
And it actually is um. It's actually fairly recent. Uh, we we, but to your point, um, if if we see some significant changes in this next legislature. We're likely going to, you know, may have to look at it again. Um, but the main reason behind it and the main reason I think people are, guys within those authorities are pushing for it is because without. A specific plan, you're you're wide open, so. So that was the reason we pushed real hard to get it done on this.
And if we do it properly, we control the water.
That's exactly.
So, I have no problem with this at all.
Great, thanks.
This is Commissioner Hill. Uh, I think now more than ever, we need to uh continue to employ Ms. Reber um with Jim's term coming to an end. Um, I want to say. A- as far as I'm concerned, you're probably the more expert person as far as lands and and public access and public land use on this board, so. In my business, if I don't know something, I hire somebody that does, does know something um more than I do, so. I would be for uh keeping this going, so.
So do we have a, could we get a motion on that then?
If this Commissioner Tipton, I would uh, I would make a motion that we um. Approve the press- professional service agreement um between Humboldt County and Andy Reber for consulting services. Uh, through November ninth, two thousand and twenty-six and an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion on the floor, any discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries. Okay, item fourteen, hu- uh, human resources. This is a consideration discussion. Possible approval of a request from the Assistant County Manager, Human Resources Director. To enter into an agreement with CPS HR Consulting for um. Employee Engagement Services that includes the development of an employee engagement survey. That will be used to collect responses from Humboldt County employees to measure the overall employment satisfaction. The agreement. Would be in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Morning, Abel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Abel Durrell, now of Assistant County Manager, HR Director for purposes of the record. So I'm very excited to be here before you this morning to uh propose uh or recommend CPS HR Consulting for uh their employee engagement services. Um, going back a little bit, I believe last year, uh, we mentioned this is an option to kind of get a fundamental understanding, a baseline understanding of. Where our employees are at as far as their satisfaction with working for Humboldt County uh and all facets related to that. Whether that's compensation, uh, benefits, management, supervision, those sorts of things. Um, I. You know, we we kind of talked about, well, could that be done in-house, but I think ultimately it would be best if that were done by a, you know, third party. With uh experience and developing these surveys, assisting us in uh the development of that and also the implementation of that. And interpreting any results. So we reached out to two companies. The first one was a CPS HR. Um, they. Came from a list of recommended vendors from Poopak. Um, and. Uh, so we took a look at those, um, narrowed it down to to two of them. We need two quotes because it would be, the service would be over five thousand or five thousand dollars. Um, CPS was very responsive, came back to us. Uh. We held a, they held a demonstration for us over teams uh involved with with Kelly and also Commissioner Hill. Um, who expressed, uh, I think more interest than than anybody as far as the board for something like this um. To kind of uh see where we're at and see where uh, if any concerns that maybe have been brought up to the board are correlated with employee satisfaction. So the CPS, and I have Janelle here from uh the company, and she can also help answer any questions. But they gave a really robust demonstration of the product offering. Um, they would be able to. Uh, work with us, develop a a survey that's tailored to Humboldt County based on our strategic goals, our mission statement and our values. And then after that administer the survey electronically through their own survey um system. As well as uh paper for any employees that maybe aren't computer savvy. Um, as well as uh translating the survey, the Spanish for our Spanish-speaking employees. Um, also sending reminders to employees, uh, inviting them via letter with special codes, so really just getting out there. Uh, through every means possible to get as much participation from employees as possible, hosting a kickoff meeting. Uh, with management uh so that, you know, we can know what to expect. Um, also, based on the results, providing support after the fact, uh, helping us interpret the results based on um. Scientific reasoning. Uh, as well as, uh, I think the the most exciting part, well, one of them was uh. Once we have a baseline, we'd be able to compare ourselves to other public sector organizations to see where we're at. Uh, are we leading, are we lagging, or are we right? You know, are we right there with uh the rest of them? Um, and also the support and reports afterwards to help us uh move forward on fixing some of these issues. Uh, while keeping in mind that we do have two unions, so it would probably be something that we would work with our uh labor organizations on. Interpreting any results where possible. Of course, there's always uh, sometimes there's fiscal restrictions, but if we can come to uh. See what maybe is lagging, maybe we can work together for the benefit of the county.
Abel, would that also include services um following the termination of employee like an exit interview?
So, uh. The exit interview is um, it it's kind of a a separate. It it's a separate process um where, you know, we we do exit interviews. In fact, we just had one last week for uh an employee. The difference is here is that you're getting the results from, you know, over two hundred employees at once that are still here, whereas somebody might have. Had reasons for leaving, and usually with an exit interview, you offer it to an employee who's voluntarily left. Um, because they can provide that honest feedback, whereas someone who maybe didn't leave on the best terms.
I get, I get all that. I I think it's uh, uh, I I would hope that in trying to. Coalesce a lot of data to see where we stand. Having an idea why somebody voluntarily leaves employment. Um, to actually dovetail into that would be beneficial. I mean, if if it's, it's it's workplace. Uh, related, if it's, if it's salary related, if it's benefits related, then those are the kinds of questions I think. All of us, you know, are keen to, you know, to try to, try to collate, you know, so that we can uh be be more competitive, I think is the idea behind it.
Absolutely, and we do have a a policy related to exit interviews, and that's something we kind of kickstarted back up. We, like I mentioned, we just had one for an employee that recently left. Um, the insight they were able to provide was very valuable. I shared some of that with our county manager on Friday. Um, and I think there, based on the feedback, there are opportunities for uh for improvement and. What that entails from our level is working with that manager. Uh, whether it's a one-on-one coaching session or through the performance review process and saying, here are the goals. Um, which would apply to you. Maybe there's other things that apply organization-wide. Uh, but it would be interesting to see if those responses from the exit interview kind of correlates with the responses we hope to get from all the employees. So it's, uh, and when we can get data from over two hundred employees as opposed to just one, I think that speaks volumes. Uh, because we can find out exactly what's wrong, and if we can fix it, that would help also avoid. Yeah, possibly having them leave for one reason or another.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, this Commissioner Hill, so yeah, I sat on this committee and I guess I'll go back a little bit. I don't know if everybody knows where this stems from, but when we set the goals and expectations for uh county manager. Uh, one of the things I brought up was cohesion of departments and and. At that time, we had some departments doing really, really well and and long-term employees, and we had some departments with a high turnover. at that time, we had some departments doing really, really well and and long-term employees, and we had some departments with a high turnover. Um, so I I guess in those goals, and I don't remember exactly what it was, but the goal was for him to look into it and to possibly, you know, do a survey um and survey our employees and and see, let them have a voice and and maybe we can and make something out of it and figure out which departments are struggling and why. Um, you know, if we don't, if we don't measure something, we we have really no way to manage it. Uh, I mean, you've heard that. It's kind of a cliche thing in in every training you ever been to, but i- if if you don't measure any metrics against anything, we're just kind of shooting in the dark. So um, I think Abel kind of ran with it and and we came together and and came up with this survey. So um, cost cost-wise, it probably was a little higher than I expected, but i- in the grand scheme of things, it's twelve thousand five hundred dollars. I I truly think it's money well spent. I think the data that comes out of this will shed some light on on a lot of things. Um, the other thing I did sit through the um presentation and it's it's all non-disclosed, no names are given, Abel has no names, Dave will have no names, I'll have no names. They spit out data without any any employees tied to it. So we don't ever see that side of it. So, you know, rest assured, we're not sitting in an office somewhere throwing out bad reviews or good reviews. It it, we don't even see that data. And that was one of my concerns when I talked to them is, you know, who puts all this together? And and this company basically takes it all and and we don't ever see. Really, we don't see anything other than the raw data when it comes back, so.
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought up that point.
Yeah.
That was uh something else when we discussed earlier about whether that would happen in-house through like, you know, a survey monkey or something to employees. I think it was important.
Yeah, and that was the other, the other one. There was two of them that we had compared to, if I remember right, and one of them was a little less expensive, but sometimes you get what you pay for too. It was a very generic uh type setup and uh left a lot to be desired, in in my opinion. So this is a very professional, put-together system, in my opinion. And I think we're we're making the right choice going with this.
Yeah, I think it's more important. I think the the key issue to me is that it's independent. You know, the employees can come to a a third party that isn't connected directly to their employer.
Yep.
And actually honestly respond to a survey, you know, because, you know, other than other than that, if you, you know, you'd always argue that, you know, the responses you were getting were skewed because they were worried about retribution and whatnot. So I think it's coming out of that that notion, I think, is where this contract came from, is the third party, so.
How many employees do we have?
Uh, we have about two hundred fifteen to two thirty, right around there. I don't have an exact count, but.
Two fifteen or two thirty, somewhere in there?
Right. I I don't have an exact count right now, but I can find that out before the end of the meeting and get back to you on that. Maybe I believe Gina's on the line. I think she can run a report and let us know exactly.
Yes. Thank you, Gina Rackley Comptroller. We have two hundred and twenty-five active employees at the moment.
All right, I was right there.
Thank you, Gina.
So it was right between.
Hey, any other additional comments?
Yes, this is Commissioner Haas. I am adamantly against spending twelve thousand five hundred dollars when we already have a human resources department that should have got this done already. And I don't agree with how Humboldt County carries their Humboldt or their human resources. It's, and I've been adamant about that for the two years I've been on here. I would look at this and say, well, if we're going to spend twelve thousand five hundred dollars with these, one of these people, why not just turn it all over to human resources? Because even if we were able to do this, and it would have to be a one-to-one, every employee would have to be brought in and interviewed. It's the only way that would be fair. And once that's done, we haven't changed. We haven't changed the HR away from the management. And it's not going to work. It's going to be the same thing that we have right now.
We don't have a survey right now, the survey that's being developed on.
I have a survey right now, and I've been out there talking to them. I've talked to other HR, several other HRs, uh, big companies and whatnot. And the reason that they're not able to come to HR is because the HR is tied to the manager. And they're afraid of retaliation, and I have personally seen that since I've been here. So I really believe in order to get this taken care of, you're going to have to separate and make HR on their own. And and I spend another twelve thousand five hundred dollars to to have that shown to you.
I understand what this this question was settled in earlier meeting where you said that you understood and you were fine with the process moving forward, but I guess we're we're back to.
Yeah, I understand that you need to do your job and do this like we asked you to. And you've been unable to do it because it won't come forward.
I.
The question wasn't being uh not being unable to do it. It, the question surrounded, and I remember the conversation well, whether or not somebody would honestly be able to answer questions located within a survey. The survey themselves, um, the the way a question is asked and the way the question is delivered in many cases can be can bias an answer. And so the and so the question was actually bounced around here and we were, the thought was is that we needed a third, somebody who didn't have connection at all to the county to actually develop the questions and and sur- survey the employees independent of that and then give an independent evaluation of where the weaknesses occur if there are any in the county. So for us to be able to deal with it as well as HR, as well as the county manager. That was my understanding in the in those uh conversations.
And I did offer to do a survey in-house, but I believe that the board came to the conclusion they would like a third party to do it this a few meetings ago because uh it would encourage employees to be open and honest because it wouldn't be directly tied to the organization. Regardless of my position was split or not, I'm still an agent of Humboldt County.
Well, I know you went to Pool Pack because one of the in the conversation, remember, we asked, it was, does Pool Pack provide those kinds of services? And you went to Pool Pack and they said, no, this is the group of contractors that that provide those services on our behalf.
Correct.
So that is through that request. That is exactly how we got to this contract that we have in front of us today.
And I also think with this survey, um, it it gives our employees some buy-in and and gives them an opportunity to provide us feedback and 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 possibly sway the direction that we go in the future, whether we do make changes. Um, you know, we have that buy-in from our employees that I think is much needed for for the direction that we take this counting. I mean, the employees are are a huge part of what we do. I mean, we couldn't do what we do in this county without our employees. So um, my personal opinion is that we that we have buy-in from them and we have an unbiased third-party buy-in that we can start to restructure our organization if needed. Um, and that's where I'm coming from.
Commissioner Hill, since you were involved in this, can you give me how the how it's going to get done?
Yeah, and I think it would be a good time to bring um bring her on here. I think that would maybe shed a little more light to exactly.
Janelle, are you still there?
How the how the non-disclosure, the.
Yes, I'm I'm here. Um, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for um considering our proposal. So my name is Janelle Callahan and I'm with CPS HR Consulting. We are a self-supporting government agency and I'm with a unit called the Institute for Public Sector Employee Engagement. And we focus exclusively on the public sector because we know that this is important to understand what employees are saying um and how we can help improve the organization. So we really do uh work with uh your organization to customize the survey. So we are not a cookie cutter type of experience. We really work with you on your specific goals, what is in your strategic plan, what do you want to know from this survey? And then we collect um, we collect the data through a a survey, so it's confidential to us. We know which department the employees' responses are coming from so that we can verify for you that each department's uh results reports are accurate, that these responses truly came from employees in a certain department. And with the results, we really do try to help you figure out what to do. We have an extensive library of uh of actions that you could possibly take on some of these questions if scores are low. Um, and so we really do give you lots of uh ideas and support around taking action because um, you know, as as Commissioner Hill mentioned, you want to be able to use these results to find out where you are, to how you're doing on certain things and what can be done to improve um, to improve the employee experience. And so um, you know, this this is, it's a, it's a really interesting time for all organizations. There is a lot happening now with uh turnover and just how employees are considering their jobs. And we think um what we offer with CPS HR, we offer you offer you a window into that and some deeper understanding about what your situation is and what you can do about it.
Thank you. Um, and to answer your question, Commissioner Haas, um, that's basically how it works, but my understanding is any commissioner, we, you know, we, if you have a certain concern, including uh you, Thomas, you have a certain question or a certain concern that you want to be included in that survey. There's no reason why we can't tailor a a question or a strategy in there to to hopefully come to a conclusion on on what your concerns are and.
That's why I asked this question because I've asked it and asked it and asked it. And I've got no attention whatsoever on on what we're doing. Now it comes to fruition that the employees won't come in and won't talk to the HR, won't won't deal with the HR. Um,
Well, and that's something I believe that it possibly we could get an answer out of this survey. I'm, I think there's there's several ways to go about things and I I believe, this is just my opinion, but that this would be a great way to to open that door to better our.
Absolutely agree with you, Commissioner Hill. And uh there are other avenues for employees to also voice their concerns, whether that's through the district attorney's office. Uh, when our offices are conflicted, they can go there. Uh, if the employees are are represented by labor, they can also go to their labor representatives. And I believe that they they know that as well. So um, it's frankly a surprise and a shock to hear that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a huge difference between uh a standalone survey that has comprised of questions that that are targeted toward um specific areas and of concern and actually asking an employee to come in and interview, um, you know, for a survey. Uh, you know, I I that's inter- that's that's intimidating in and of itself. And I understand the the uh those limitations that would suggest, but if there if there is a survey, a standalone survey with an evaluation of those questions, uh the answers to those questions that uh from an experienced third party, that's going to give us a clear picture as to what what we what we're needing here. And and that goes to the a lot of the robust conversation we had during the uh evaluation for our county manager. And I think this goes exactly where we were asked to go. And I I appreciate Commissioner Hill actually putting the time and energy into it, so.
Well, and I think if we can we can give better direction, if we can come out of this and give better direction to our leadership, and if we can slow down turnover, uh, you know, there's there's just a few key things that we can do out of this that I think will tenfold, say, the county money in the end, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's where I'm coming from. We have, we have to have data to be able to to really make any accurate changes and without that data, I think we're just shooting in the dark.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Okay, any additional conversation on that? Is there a motion?
I would make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I would make a motion that we um, we approve a request from the Assistant County Manager slash HR Resource Director to enter in an agreement with CPS HR Consulting for an employee engagement service that includes development of an employee engagement survey that will be used to collect responses from the Humboldt County employees and to measure overall employment satisfaction. The agreement would be for an amount not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Uh, let the record show that Commissioner Haas uh was a nay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Right, thank you. Okay, item fifteen is approval of appraiser proposals to conduct an appraisal for DeLong property. This is a consideration discussion and pro- uh possible approval to conduct two appraisals on proper parcel number zero six zero four zero one dash four four to establish the value of a parcel for the possible acquisition of land for the expansion of the Humboldt County Regional Landfill and an amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars as per NRS two four four dash backup uh NRS two four four point two seven nine five, which requires that the Board of County Commissioners have property appraised by two qualified appraisals from the county uh from the county's established list of appraisers prior to acquiring and or selling land per uh NRS two four four point two seven five two. Uh, that's a mouthful. As you're as you're well aware of, um, and then I'll turn this over to Dave. Uh, what, this is part of a long-term strategy. Uh, we had, was it thirty-seven acres that was in the was in the RP and P discussions?
Correct.
Uh, we we've had our, what, thirty-seven acres now that we've had uh requested for the Bureau of Land Management for RP and P services uh to actually get land from the federal government that's adjacent to our current landfill. Um, it it's been, I've, it, that request has been in place, was in play prior to me coming on as the commissioner. Here I am, it's almost twelve years I've been a commissioner now and it's still pending. So this is a, I believe, is a is a good strategy uh for maintaining the integrity of our regional landfill in the in in it for the long term uh pending the outcome of the RP and Ps. Am I wrong on that?
No, Mr. Chair, uh Dave Mendiola for the record. So yes, we originally, um, well, actually before I came, um, we had started on RP and R and P P process with BLM to acquire that property that's just south of this, what's uh outlined here in the DeLong property. And um, we went along for many years, uh five or six years. Finally, um, the BLM responded and said, well, there's mining claims in that area. You're going to have to get those relinquished uh in order for us to do anything more. I did reach out to the uh company that holds those mining claims um and they are not interested in relinquishing those mining claims. So um, they were interested potentially in allowing us to use a portion of that land, but again, my my concern with that is that you will run out of room again um if you do that. So um, and you're going to be very limited as to where you can actually expand uh the landfill. So in looking around, I realized that, again, this property that you see on your monitor um in, I guess it's blue there outlined, is the DeLong property owned by DeLong. Um, I spoke with DeeDee DeLong several months ago. We started a dialogue about whether they'd be interested in selling that land. Uh, she is. Uh, we talked again this past week. She's very interested in doing so. So NRS uh requires that we get, and I believe it's at least one appraisal, but technically in the past, we we would get two just to make sure that we are getting the best price and not relying on one appraisal. Um, so I, as part of that, what you do, there's NRS statute which deals with um putting together an appraisal list. And so we did that originally about five years ago. We updated it again about last year. And so we currently have a five appraisers and literally we had to beg them to help us out here in Humboldt County, just simply because they don't want to travel. And there's nobody in our region that does this kind of stuff in in Humboldt County specifically. So um, we do have five really good appraisals. The accessory use is one of them, Mark Stafford, that is on this list. And um, so we know they're good. We've dealt with uh Mr. Wright in the past. Uh, Mr. Buckholz is one of the guys on the list. He's new. Um, after begging him for a while, we we got him to agree to to join that group. So so that's what I brought before you is. So, so that's what I brought before you is a request for two appraisals of the Long property. And my thought is that we would appraise the entire property. Um, I don't know that we need the entire property for expansion. That could take us out a hundred plus years probably. Um, but it also, if it's the right price, it may be a good thing to do. Um, so I think though that it's possible that the DeLongs would be interested in buying, uh, selling part, part of the parcel. So that's something we can deal with, but I think we need to get the entire parcel appraised. Then at that time I would come back to you and show you what those are. And in the end, just so you know, from a financial standpoint, whatever the cost, that would be borne out by the solid waste fund, which is the, um, regional landfill fund, which they've got several million dollars in their ending fund balance. So it would not come out of the general fund. Um, so anyway, that's, that's what this request is to get two appraisals. And once we get those, we'll come back and we'll talk further about potentially purchasing the property.
Yep. Okay.
Where the, uh, land that we're looking at here is the one on the screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What are we appraising it for? What, what is the actual need? I, okay. You, you tell me the state says we have to appraise it, anything we buy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So all we're doing is look at a piece of ground here. And we're going to have it appraised on how much that piece of ground would, would cost. Subtitle, Subtitle D regulations went in while I was still running the landfills. We had to prove to the state that we wouldn't have, wouldn't have to use a liner, which means that we came in here and we drilled all over that existing footprint. That is going to have to be okayed by the state. So instead of going, you know, and having it appraised, I mean, you go out having it appraised, somebody can give you a, an idea of what they want for that. If they haven't already do it and done it, you know, if I, if we were talking about one of us owning this, we would at least talk and say, well, what do you think it's worth? But there's a, there's a whole deal here that with NDEP, it's going to have to be done. Now, when they did it through Subtitle D regulations, they, actually the federal government was paying for it. And I went with the other two bigger companies, the biggest companies here in Nevada, went before the legislature and proved to them that we didn't need liners. We didn't need all the rest of this stuff. Are we going to be able to do that here? It's, we can't just go out there and say, okay, we're going to take this and put the, the landfill right here without it being in a place that, uh, it can be. Now, I, I don't know that there was any science, science in where the footprint is, but we couldn't have found a better place. You know, 383 feet of clay. So it's not going to go anywhere. But as you move around here, you get into different things. Now, what are we going to find in this piece of property? And are we going to have to put a liner in it, which is going to cost us millions of dollars and wells? And, you know, everything else in it. And I think that needs to be looked at first before you go out here and make a deal on a piece of property you can't, you know, can't possibly use. That would be my only concern.
And I think that's a good concern. Yeah. I'm not familiar with that. Obviously you are, and that's great. So I have no problem with that. Um, in, in waiting, we've waited this long. We've got another, you know, 15, 16 years left in our mine life. So, yeah.
I had also talked to people that are running this. We haven't got that much time.
Wait, so what, what are you proposing then? Are we, are we, are you not interested in?
No, no, I.
This ground or?
We need a piece of ground up there.
Yeah.
Okay. So Subtitle D regulations put in culverts big enough to run a, uh, school bus down in Washington and Oregon because of the water up there. Have to take the water that hits that piece of property, take it off and, and put it in reservoirs and treat it before it can go anywhere else. Okay. We talked them into not doing that here because of the arid ground and that ways we are. But this, you've got a creek running right through that. And so those are just other things that we need to think about. I have no problem in going up there and buying this piece of property.
We have 30, you know, the 37 acres that we were looking at for our P and P and you're, I'm sure you're aware of it, was adjacent to the present landfill, 412 feet of, of, uh, my recollection of it was 412 feet to groundwater, uh, from that, from that site. And we, uh, the, the landfill committee and the previous commission was interested in that piece of ground. That was the reason we pursued the RP and P there because it was a logical extension of the, of the footprint we had in play. This land, and I do agree that if you look at the entire section of ground right there, that's, there's an awful lot of topography right there. You'd have to take, if you were, if your thought was the back of your mind, that's all going to be a landfill someday. Very likely with the changes in land in our, uh, from the federal government as well as from the state, the NDEP, we'd be looking at a liner. Undoubtedly, um, uh, we may be looking at a liner in the expansion from here on. I don't know. It's just good to, it's going to depend on what waters of the U.S. produces for us. But, um, presently with the footprint we have right now and with the extension we're asking for, I'm, you know, I mean, if you looked at that little chunk of extension on the end there, right next to the DeLong or the RP and P property, um, that would be the part that I would logically think we would be looking at for landfill because it still has that elevation high enough above the, the groundwater. But, um, I get back to my original question, uh, Commissioner, is that, are you interested in us moving forward with this acquisition based on RP and P? Uh, because of it's, it's adjacent to the present footprint or do you have another?
I have no problem with that. What I do have, you know, what I'd look at this about, and I know the topography up there, I step there every day. So we need to find out how much of this we can use. You know, can we use the whole thing? Then buy the whole thing. If we can't use the whole thing and we're going to have to just expand it for a period of time, 10 years, 40 years.
Sure.
This footprint that we're on here was set for 40 years after Subtitle D. And so that's something we need to look at.
I don't.
I, I have no problem in, in extending that out and, and, you know.
So how about, how about we have the appraisal done, which will give us a number per acre? You know, eventually for the chunk. And then take a look at suitability before we actually pull, trip, pull the trigger on how many acres are interested. Take a look at suitability in terms of the soil profile, just like it's exactly the same questions they asked when the, the, the regional landfill was built initially. And do some of that drilling, determine what our, what our groundwater looks like right there. Determine what the clay layers look like that, you know, maybe we can have NDEP take a look at it through our plan because we have to submit that, you knew that, uh, to determine whether or not it would require, um, uh, additional measures for us to isolate that from groundwater. Uh, and, but anyway, by doing that, we would actually determine to your, to your point, where we need the ground we actually absolutely have to have in order to expand the footprint. And then determine whether or not any of this additional stat, ground, ground out here would be suitable. Is that kind of what you're?
So what you're saying is go ahead and appraise this blue square.
I'm sorry.
You're going, you're going to appraise this blue square, correct?
Right.
Okay. Uh, I, you know, it, it's money spent and I think that we may be putting the cart in front of the horse to a degree. Now, I'm pretty sure that we can take part of this, um, and utilize it, but I'm not positive. And we have to get it through NDEP. We, we get it through an appraisal and, you know, you decide to buy a piece of property. Uh, what happens if we can't put anything on it? Do we got, do we get our money back or?
We punk. You know, I mean, ultimately that's the only shot we have. I mean, the bottom line is we have RP and P on one end of it and we've got the Long's property on the other side of it to expand the footprint. The only other, you know, if, if that comes back as unsuitable for us, we're looking at a, at a brand new regional landfill.
Yes.
Someplace else. I guess that's.
And I don't believe.
That's for you to handle. Obviously I'm not going to be on this board or have to deal with that. But I think from right now, in order, but based on the Plan B that we actually submitted to, to NDEP, we can extend the life according to our own estimates. We can, we can extend the life of the landfill significantly in that footprint. Um, if, if we buy that, that we either get the RP and P land from the Bureau of Land Management or we, we pick up the DeLong property, which is just at the east of that. Um, I think that's ultimately what we have to do first. We have to determine whether or not the, if the ground comes in richer than we can, than we want to spend, we need to know that before we start drilling holes in the ground. And, um, but if it comes in and it's reasonably priced for that piece of land in there, then I think we need to establish what the footprint looks like based on the geology underneath the ground there. Same thing we'd have to do otherwise. And, uh, uh, go from there. I mean, ultimately there's a lot of choices on the ground for us. I mean, if we decide we don't, let's just assume that the groundwater miraculously gets closer to the surface than a hundred feet. Um, then we're looking at, we're looking at a, uh, a liner. Um, and some monitoring wells. Um, if it doesn't, if it's below, if it's at 412, which is what it was initially or thereabouts, then I think we get that exemption. We've had the exemption before. That's why we have the exemption now. So that's just me and I, you know, we're having a, we're having a conversation about it. And I, and I, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I have, I think this is a very important first step we have to take in order to determine whether or not we have an option here.
I just have some comments. This, Commissioner Hill. Obviously I think an expansion or getting permitting for an expansion is going to be a heck of a lot easier than for a new facility, just in my mining experience and aggregate mining experience. Um, I think permitting of an expansion is going to be a lot easier. Uh, I'm not going to pretend like I know what the EPA laws are now because I don't. Um, rather we can even get away with what we got away with 40 years ago. I, I don't know. Possibly in an expansion, um, I, I have a hard time believing that the clay layer and the groundwater changed significantly right at a property line. So I, I think Commissioner Haas is right. I think there's a section there that's probably very usable, but rather the whole section is usable or not, I, I don't know. But I, I do think we need to, we didn't need to know what it would cost if we were to venture into that area. Um, I don't know. You know, what the, what the drilling cost would be to, to check for the clay layer and all that stuff. I, I don't know, or if that's even something that we can.
We're going to have, we're going to have to do that if, if, when we apply for the expansion.
Yeah. And I think that would be something that may come and come into play with contracting with the DeLongs when we're looking at the purchases. Hey, we need to make sure that this is feasible for us before we even buy it. But, um, you know, unfortunately with, with the NRSs and then the laws, we do have, as a county, we do have, we do have processes we have to go through before we can even start to buy something. But, um, I, I would imagine the appraisal is probably a lot less expensive than the drilling to look at the clay layers and that stuff. But, um, you know, again, and I guess Tom's right. We need to know if we can use it before we spend money on it too. So it, it is a tough call.
Um, you know, we did.
In, in my mind, that would be, that would be our, our best option to, to expand would be right there.
You know, it's a roll of the dice either way. It was a roll of the dice when we, when we bought the chunk of county ground up there right now.
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't have that data. Uh, we didn't have the data on that suitability of that location or, uh, we had an idea based on historical data that going back, we had a, we had a pretty good idea. The probability was high we were going to get to use it. We didn't drill any holes up there until we owned it. And, uh, and we're going to have, if the RP and P land that we, that we've already got in the hopper right now, we're going to have to do the same thing there. Uh, so any of this land, any of the suitability questions are going to have to be fleshed out after we, after we purchase it. And I guess my point is, is that what are our options? If we don't buy that land, if we don't buy the 37 on that RP and P and we don't buy this, a chunk of that DeLong land uh, for there, then we're looking at a new landfill and that's a heck of a lot more money than we're talking about right here.
Yeah. And I would imagine that all the grandfather stuff would go away and you would be, you would be.
Yeah.
Brought into current.
Yeah.
Statutes and whatnot, but I don't know. Unless you have a good solution, how, how do we drill it or how do we?
Or you don't.
How, how do we find that out before we?
We don't.
We appraise it? I mean.
You don't.
I, I believe this is, Mr. Commissioner Tipton, I believe this is really a no brainer. If we want to, if we want to expand our landfill, this is our, our best opportunity to do so. Um, and I assume that there are mineral rights that go with this.
Yeah.
Touched on those.
We have, we haven't gotten that far.
The appraisal, but I mean, the, my, I guess my, I rephrased my question. Do you know, does anyone have mining claims that do not belong to DeLongs on the DeLong property?
Yeah. And I don't know. That's one of the things that would come out in the appraisal. They would give us.
You know, I think we have to go for an appraisal and if, if it is affordable, you, you buy it and you leave it up to the landfill committee to work and get back with the commission and, and see where we can expand and what drilling we need to do. And, um, I'm looking at the topography and knowing it myself and, and with comments that Commissioner Haas has made here and at other times, there's probably some of that that will be good and there's probably some that won't be good. But, uh, I think it's an opportunity we need to look at now. So.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
So that's our question. Um, are we going to look at, are we looking at, at an appraisal right now? And from two appraisals to, to get an idea of what we're looking at for the ground. And I, in my view, that's the first step before we actually decide what, what's suitable. And, and if it is, it'll be suitable regardless. It's just a matter of, of what kind of engineered solutions are going to be required of us based on groundwater.
Well, it's all talk until we do get an appraisal. We can't.
Yeah, exactly right.
Can't do anything without an appraisal. Then, once we get an appraisal back, um, then we have an, uh, another situation to look at and just, and make a decision on based on that appraisal.
Yeah. So next step. Okay. So would he, do we have a motion for an appraisal then?
I would make a motion that, uh, that we get two appraisal proposals, uh, for the DeLong property for expansion of the Humboldt County Regional Landfill.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, so let's move to item 16. Uh, this is a request to, um, let's see, it's consideration discussion, possible approval of a memorandum of understanding, MOU number NVW dash 010000-0027 with the Bureau of Land Management to authorize either Chairman French or County Manager Mindiola to sign the memorandum pending view by the District Attorney's Office. The BLM is in a baseline data collection and document preparation phase for a proposed trail improvement project in Water Canyon Recreation Area. Uh, the BLM intends to replace a bridge and establish an outdoor classroom and resurfacing of a trail to expand community education opportunities and make a trail more accessible to the public. This is, um, I'm going back in my previous life. Now, this is a, an item that is, um, has been on the table before. We had, we're operating under an MOU there now. It's not the same one that they're proposing under this number. Uh, we had a, uh, there was a, an active Water Canyon and, um, uh, working group for the lack of a better term. I think, uh, Commissioner Amos was on that for a while. Uh, trying, the idea behind the thing was to try to determine, because there was so much activity up there and so much interest in Water Canyon, there was an interest as to how, where do we go with that? How do we, um, you know, there was a lot of money spent up there, as you probably remember, in terms of the recreation area of camping sites, access roads. Um, there was a lot of work done with the stream itself to try to stabilize it up there. There was some, uh, Clevis Multrum type, uh, uh, outhouses installed up there. Um, there was, and at that same time, there was, the school district was actually utilizing. the school district was actually utilizing Water Canyon for ecology days and they were utilizing that entire run of, of through that recreation area to set up for ecology days for the fourth graders to actually, access a lot of the different, uh, a lot of the different public land related, um, uh, issues, um, and and rub elbows with a lot of people who, who are responsible for managing those kinds of lands, everything from mining to water management to NDEP to Endow to Forest Service. You know, BLM is up there as well. And so it's, it's been an ongoing classroom and it is highly utilized by the community. It's, it's well received by the community. This, in my view, is just a, this, they're, they're in phase two of it right now of, of that development up there. And I think the reason, putting words in their mouth, they're not in here right now, but I, I've had conversations with them in the past about what they're gonna do with Water Canyon Recreation Area and now that it burned up. Remember right after we got the thing done, the whole thing burned. That was in oh seven. It burned up. And it, there's, it's gonna require, yeah, we are, we're all sitting there going, what in the heck were we doing? But there's a lot of things that could be done to that right now to stabilize it again. Uh, there's a lot of the, the stream itself is just waiting for another big water event before it blows up. So there's gonna be some work done there and there's gonna be some, some, um, trail work done, I'm sure, to try to support that, uh, watershed and that, um, mainly that riparian area that's up there. So I think that's what this MOU is about. And, uh, uh, I think I would, I would definitely, um, you know, looking at our, our packet for the MOU and whatnot. You can see what they're proposing in it. But it isn't much different than what we've had in the past there. It's just, uh, it's, it's just another phase of the recognizing the need for stabilizing that riparian area and moving forward with it. That's, that's me. So I, that's all I know about it right now, but, uh, Dave, did you have, did, have they had any conversations with you?
Um, Mr. Chair, no, Dave Mindiola, no, I haven't had any discussions. I just got the packet from them to, as we always get through the NEPA process, uh, to be a cooperating agency. Um, I think it's pretty normal for us to join in on that, whether it just be me alone or one of the commissioners wanted to join me. That would be fine. I think it's pretty straightforward. I think it's just improvement of a couple of tra- or bridges up there that cross the creek and a new area. Um, I think it was for something, I can't remember, but yeah, it was an educational area. That's what it was. Sorry.
I don't have a problem with them doing what they want to do, but I do have a problem with asking the BLM for extension of a shooting range and them sitting on it as long as they have. So what can we do?
Sort of twist their arm.
To, to get this thing done. I mean, they say it's back and, and, you know, federal government has a hold of it.
Yep.
You know, and then they come to us again and say, well, uh, how about you guys helping us? You know, well, we already got it approved.
A good point. I mean, twisting arms is a good thing.
Let's do a little bit of pressure on these guys and see if we can't get them to do their job.
Well, we, I, you know, I'm just gonna weigh in on that. Uh, we put a lot of pressure on those guys over that shooting range, over that, that hundred and twenty acres. Uh, there has been, that has been, I, I sat in the Secretary of Interior's office and asked about that. There was absolutely no problem moving that thing forward under the Trump administration. That was fast tracked. We were on our way, uh, to getting that thing done. Things changed since then. And so now, um, those kinds of proposals seem to all be sitting in a basket in the interior, um, along with about ten thousand other things. I'm not making excuses for the secretary, but I can tell you right now, nothing's coming out of her office right now, um, in, in my view. What we're seeing on the Water Canyon side of it is, is acqui- is the utili- utilization of some funding that was provided to the Bureau of Land Management for recreation purposes. So it's, there's two sides to it right now. There's, you got the whole side that's talking about expansion of shooting sports and you got another side over here that's talking about expansion of public activity and, and interpretation on public lands. The administration we're in right now favors that kind of work. They don't necessarily favor activities having to do with, uh, using firearms. That's just the way it is. And I, I would, I agree with you, Tom. I think we need to continue the, the pressure on them. That isn't just us. That isn't, isn't going to be these, the commission. I, I didn't go back to DC and go talk to our Secretary of Interior because I was thinking about that shooting, uh, expansion on the shooting park. But it was on my shortlist of things to talk about and they, and it appeared to me at that time that it was on the fast track to get that thing done. When I came back, it looked like we were going to. I think it's gonna require, to be honest with you, it's gonna require a lot of pressure on the part of this, this board down the road as administrations change. But I think right now it's, it's, um, what I am seeing and it's not just, it's not just shooting parks and that kind of thing. It has to do with the priority list that they're operating under right now. Everything from thirty thirty all the way to, um, some of the issues and concerns having to do with the waters of the US. There's, they're all over those kinds of decision-making processes. They're not on the, on the other things, especially if it came out of the Trump administration. And so that's what we're dealing with right now. It, the good news is it's still in play. We still have an option on it. We still, the paperwork is still there and it's just, um, it just needs to be a, basically, all we're waiting for is publication in the Federal Register. Am I wrong?
Correct.
So we've done, we jumped through the hoops. So.
So. I mean, I, I understand all that, you know? I mean, we did our due diligence. We did. And couldn't, they couldn't find anything wrong with it. We couldn't find anything wrong with it by simply extending out the shooting range a little bit. You've been working on it a long time.
And I don't want to interrupt you, Wendy Maddox, purpose of the record. It just sounds like we're getting a little bit off agenda topic.
Well, it kinda is. I'm, I'm sorry. It, it's all, it's all the same package of land. They're all right together. And we're talking about RP and P versus of acquisition of, of land and whatnot. And we're talk, well, goes back to a discussion we had here item just before there, but, um, I, I get your point. I guess, and, and, you know, we probably ought to, Tom, I'm assuming you're going up to those meetings that they're having up there on either Wednesdays, first Wednesday of the month or something at the shooting range?
I haven't been.
I had been going for a while and I just got busy and didn't get, hadn't been up there in a while. I think it's important that we stay engaged with them. Um, I can do that too. If, if somebody else would like to do that off this board, that's fine. We should be in, we should sit there and, you know, if there's developments that Kent Arian has, then I think we probably ought to hear it. Um, but on the flip side of that, every si- every time I get on the phone with Amade, every time I've gotten on the phone with Masto, uh, I ask him, and, uh, you know, hey, we're still waiting on this. Hey, and, and it's a public safety issue and that's what I keep pushing at him. It's not just your brother's cows that are running around back there. It's a public safety issue. And so I think we can, it, this whole thing, we threw cold water on it with this administration. It's in play right now. They threw cold water on it. So I'll just say it like that, but you're, um, if, you're welcome, Tom. If you wanna, if you wanna give them a call, I'll give you the numbers. If you wanna go, I'll call them up and rail on the, uh, Secretary Howland on that. That's, I'm sure you'd love to hear from.
This is Humboldt County.
Yeah.
This is our land, Humboldt County. BLM thinks differently. So they're gonna come in here and want to do what they want to do. Well, I don't necessarily agree with that. And, and I have watched this Water Canyon area do all sorts of good. I've watched the classes go up there, speed up on that. They're doing a good thing. But we need to have, you know, we need to control Humboldt County. The same thing when I asked you about the water plan. We have to get those things in place. So anyway, I, I'm done with this.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. I, I don't wanna, with, with regard to the Water Canyon MOU though, is which we're on right now. You know, the question in front of us is that, do we want to throw the baby out with the bathwater? Do we want to not go into that MOU right now so that we can use that as leverage with the shooting park? Or do we want to move forward with the MOU?
The only thing I can see out of this is I've read this stuff from our governor all the way through and he has a different plan for the areas that we have hunted for years. And I can see this being part of that shutting off Water Canyon. But, you know, I, I'm looking down the road. I'm not looking just today to do, you know, this and that, so.
Well, I think
I've said enough on it now, so.
Tom, I think you just made the case then for us to do this MOU because by doing the MOU, we be, we are in play to be cooperating agency status when they start planning what they're gonna do with that. And when the first time I got involved in that, the BLM actually wanted to close that road off that, that, um, on Water Canyon. So you, you couldn't get through that up on top of the mountain. That was actually part of the plan. And we backed them off of that. They put a gate in and we, we've changed that and we actually have limited access based all the way up to the riparian area. And they left that road that, that switchback that goes back up the ridge and goes back up on top of the mountain. Those were gonna go away. The last time Water Canyon was, the last time they planned this. So that's, I think that makes the argument for us. So, so if somebody throws something like that into the, into the mix, us being there as cooperating agencies, we actually get to do this with them. And we actually, we're sitting at the table right along with their, uh, the, the rest of their, uh, planning staff in terms of trying to decide whether or not that's appropriate for the county or not. So, um, I think it's, I think it's in our best interest to, to be on that MOU.
I agree.
The motion?
Sure. Uh, I would, this Commissioner Hill, I would make a motion that we approve a MOU with the BLM and to authorize either Chairman French or County Manager Dave Mindiola to sign the MOU pending review by the DA's office.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item seventeen, um, this item, um, I, I contemplated removing this item from our agenda because of our cooperating agency status. And I just say, I, I, because I signed this, this, this letter that you have, uh, and these comments, we fleshed this out with our contractor. Um, I signed this letter and it went out so that we would make the deadline on it. It was obviously gonna happen before we have it, uh, sat down at this meeting. I think it's important to, um, that we, uh, acknowledge, I think for today in front of us, we have to acknowledge the fact that we approved the letter, um, and then, and then leave it at that. But I just wanted to say for the record right now, we are right in the middle of cooperating agency status. We have a, uh, we're under a disclosure agreement. And so we can't openly talk about this stuff yet. We have to, uh, it's important for us to weigh this information and weigh in among ourselves about that. And especially as we prepare, uh, additional comments and letters from the board. Uh, but we can't, uh, this is not something we want to get out in front of in a, in, in the news or anything at this point. It's not that we're trying to be, not trying to be transparent. What we're trying to do is, is protect the negotiations as they're, because they're gonna, they're, these negotiations are gonna materialize as we move into the, uh, the next two sections of this plan. So we, we agree to that. We have non-disclosure forms that we do, we agree to in our, as cooperating agency. And so I just wanted to uh, ask you guys just to keep, keep it, keep it to yourselves at this stage. And if you've got, uh, significant, comments having to do with the letter that I signed or the comments that we've made so thus far, uh, get them to me and, uh, and so we can incorporate them. But for today, I, I think all I really need from us is, uh, is a, a letter for the Arler. Am I wrong?
No, I think I just, Wendy Maddox, purpose of the record. Sorry, that was kinda loud. Um, I think I just want to clarify, when you're getting comments from other commissioners, I want to remind you about your prohibition on serial communications. Um, and make sure that you're not having a meeting outside of our open meeting. The other thing that I wanted to point out is Mr. Mindiola and I did take a look at the disclosure provision in the contract. And I know that he, um, it essentially says, um, you have to comply with law as well. So i- if law, if the law requires you to disclose it, then the law governs. So, um, Mr. Mindiola is gonna follow up with BLM and talk about open meeting law and why it's important that these things be on agenda and available to the public and um, that requirement in the law and get some clarification on that point for the future. Thank you.
Okay. But I think for today, I think what business at hand today is that this letter, approval of the letter or not, so. Okay. Okay, so, I don't know. Did you guys have a chance to read them? I, I apologize. We're just, we're really scap- uh, scrambling to get this thing done, so.
And it was very necessary.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, this Commissioner Tipton, I make a motion to approve the, the comments, letter for the revisions of the BLM grazing regulation forty-three CFR part forty-one hundred dated September twenty twenty, which, which were due on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Hey, um, we're down to miscellaneous reports, um, and correspondence. Uh, Commissioner Hill, do you have anything?
Uh, Commissioner Hill, no, I have a meeting on Thursday at nine AM with the opioid litigation, crew, group. So that's this Thursday.
Commissioner Haas?
And this is Commissioner Haas. October fourth, we had a museum meeting. Uh, Dana was here today and pretty much covered that whole thing for us. Um, LEPC on October eleventh. Uh, the meeting was about West Coast salmon and what Humboldt County is gonna do for West Coast salmon as far as fire, police, uh, medical, okay? Well, as it was stated by some of those that were there, it's a Persian county, not here. And so I suggested to West Coast Salmon to become self-s- self-sufficient, same as all that the ranches, all of the mines have done. So they're going to meet with Florida Canyon and they're gonna meet, uh, with Marigold possibly to look at that. But they were, you know, they just want us to come down there and take care of all that. And so they took a poll and it's thirty, thirty minutes for any of our agencies to be there, at least thirty minutes. So, anyway, they're gonna look into it differently. I had an airport board on October tenth and, uh, we were just finalizing the heart stand and getting that taken care of and looking at, uh, the projects that we're gonna be doing next year. That's all I got.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Cherry is out, obviously, so we'll wait for a report from him when he gets back in. Uh, for myself, um, Wild Horse and Borough Advisory Board Commission Meeting in Phoenix, Arizona. Um, as you might gather, it was an awful lot, uh, coming and going from that, uh, coming out of that meeting. A lot of discussion in terms of what we're gonna do, um, in the west with horse populations in light of the legislation that was just introduced in Congress. Uh, just for the record, we, uh, through emergency gather authorization, we gathered uh, just shy of twenty-one thousand horses off the public land last year. Good portion of those horses, about two-thirds of those horses came out of Nevada. Uh, there were, the vast majority of the remaindering, the remaining thirty percent came out of Southern Utah. Uh, most of the other populations of horses are pretty much at management, allowable management levels and, and they're, they're handling their own through other means other than gathers, which is good. That's where we want to end up being. Um, we have approximately sixty-eight thousand horses in captivity right now and long-term holding. Uh, most of them in Oklahoma, Nebraska, South Dakota, I think. The, uh, it's taking about sixty percent of the entire budget for the Bureau of Land Management Horse Program just for those contracts. for the Bureau of Land Management Horse Program just for those contracts. Um, the sad news is, is the twenty-one thousand horses we gathered last year will be replaced on the public land within four years. Uh, just from Christian, uh, from, uh.
Breeding.
From breeding. So we're, we are way behind the eight ball on getting this done. Um, the law, there are the regulations that are being proposed on the Congressional Act is asking for the Bureau of Land to remove authorization from the Bureau of Land Management for gathers on public land and that, uh, that the horse populations would be, uh, managed through, uh, various, um, uh, various means of contraception more than anything else. Uh, they're not interested, the, the folks that propose this are not interested in long-term sterilization. Um, they're interested in short-term. Uh, comments that were made, and the reason I'm bringing this to you in this detail is because you might get some phone calls on this as a commissioner from Humboldt County. The, the idea behind this is that, that we would be, um, able to, as we gather horses, um, without helicopters, they, they're going to, they're one outlaw the use of helicopters. So they want to do all the gathers with horseback or, um, water traps, those types of things, or food traps, which are in a large expansive area like this, it don't work very well. Um, but anyway, uh, as we capture horses, their idea is that they want to, um, want to vaccinate these horses for, with PZP. Um, the idea, PZP is, is only effective if it's, there's a booster within thirty days. And so you'd have to hang on to the mare for thirty days and booster before you release her. Um, the eye, and if you released them, if you've darted them from, like, like they want to do, they want to wander, wander around out there with dart guns and dart them. You'd have to be able to determine which ones had already been darted. And they're all brown, you know, so it doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, in, in some areas, uh, what is proposed might work. Some areas like Northern Nevada, from here to Elko County, Southern Utah, absolutely would not work. Um, so at any rate, we're, stay tuned. Uh, there's going to be a lot of debate now on this, on this bill and, uh, because they're, they're come, they're trying to completely modify the Wild Horse and Burrow Act itself. They want to completely rewrite the act. Uh, we have a congressional, uh, representative from Nevada who's co-sponsored it, Dina Titus. So, uh, we're going to have to, um, if, if you get a contact from her, we expect that she's, she'd like our, she'd like our support. Any rate, um, that's what I had for that. I had a Nevada Works, uh, Board of Directors meeting and a Leo Board of Directors meeting. There's, uh, significant changes coming to that because of the money came through ARPA. Lot of, a lot of money for training. I am, I pushed very hard again for, uh, incorporating, uh, the, the industrial arts and the trades in that, wi- with regard to that training opportunity and, uh, in our county at least, because I think they're, they're, everybody doesn't go to college. Everybody would want to go to college and we need people who are, have an interest in learning the trades and actually providing some of those services. So that's, that's been my emphasis and push as that board, on that Board of Directors. Um, uh, I, it, I think, um, as we, uh, and I just, I'll just say this, this is my idea right now. There's several counties right now, Story, Pershing, uh, Lander before, Lander and now, Elko County utilizes their Board of, on their Board of Directors, utilizes their County Manager. And, and I think from a standpoint of whatever, you know, my sense is, is that that might be an opportunity for us on this, on this board, uh, is utilize Dave. He actually weighs in on those, a lot of those meetings already and they know him well. Um, it, but it, but it would allow Dave the continuity to, to carry that forward, um, from a standpoint of economic development perspective. Anyhow, uh, having said all that, I think, um, leave it at that. I don't have anything, as far as, uh, meetings go, I've got some stuff coming up with, um, uh, I've got a, I've got one more meeting with Nevada Works. I've got another meeting coming up toward the end of this month with NACO and, uh, Public Land Steering Committee. Uh, uh, there's some big things coming out of Public Land Steering through WIR right now. The National Board for, that would be coming through WIR, which would be doing much of what we're doing right here. This kind of stuff, but it would be incorporating the, 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 the thought process and the, uh, the energy from approximately a hundred and forty counties as opposed to in the state of Nevada. It's three counties that have been pushing forward with this. So, um, so at any rate, yeah, you'll hear more of that. I, uh, I'm in favor of doing that. It isn't going to cost us anything to do that, but I just want to, uh, it was a real palette for that by the Western states. So, to, anyhow, that's all I had.
Um. I had, uh.
Yeah, Ken, go ahead.
I, I had a sit in a meeting, uh, a class and comp study with Abel. Heard, heard, uh, from two different companies. We haven't got pricing back on one of them yet. Uh, that was something that the, uh, that the Employees Group, uh, in, CBA, uh, wanted done. So we're moving forward with trying to, uh, find a company to do that, get a price to go forward with on it, bring back the board. I had a committee meeting with, uh, Humboldt General, uh, nothing I can report on there. Have a meeting coming up, uh, with them on the twenty-fifth. Other than that, I spent my time reading through proposals from the BLM and the letter.
And then.
Mandy Reber, so.
Yeah, sorry.
That's, that's what we need to have in front of us. One thing about the hospital, did they vote whether they're going to put their legal out to bed or not?
Not yet.
I, I thought that was.
They voted, they voted to have, uh, RFP's foreign attorney. And that was a committee I sat on to look at their RFPs, but we, it'll be a full board that votes on it. Whether to actually do that. Or to change, or to change.
I pretty much got it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, future agenda items?
Um, this Commissioner Hill, I have one. I, I did read your weekly report, Dave. Um, I, I want a update from the DA's office on the restitution payments. Um, we've, we've let this go. Uh, we did set a deadline, it's been beyond it. We've put it off a couple of times. Um, we are getting towards the end of the year and I, I really don't want to see an augmentation again. So I want, I want some answers.
And just for purposes of the record, it was, it was going to be on this agenda. Um, as you all probably know, I get a copy of the agenda, just like you do, to go over and make sure it's in compliance with the law. I sent some wording over to Mr. Mendiola for that item to be at today's meeting and he said it had already been moved. Um, do you want to add it back? And I said, no, that's fine, just put it on the next agenda. So.
Okay.
We would, we would have been prepared today to talk about that. Mike would have been Mike McDonald, the District Attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just to answer that, Mr., uh, or Commissioner Haas, Dave Mendiollet for the record. So it was on there, I, we just had not heard back from, uh, District Attorney McDonald. And so I didn't really know if he had anything to report or not. I did talk to him after the fact, um, I think on Thursday afternoon, we ran into each other. And he, they have been doing work on it. He says they're about halfway through all, they went back to the very first case that they took over. And they're about halfway through, they've just recently, or they're getting ready to, I think is what he said, uh, provide some information to the Treasurer's Office to give money back. Um, but they're making progress and he did say he'd be happy to come back in November, so.
Okay. And then the other one, I think this will be for our next city and county joint meeting, is I want something on there about, um, noxious weed control within city and county limits. And I really don't know how to word it, but it seems that we don't have good control on that. I've seen a lot of rabbit brush growing on Main Street around businesses, um, some invasive thistles, that sort of stuff that, and I don't know the answer, but I, I really think that could be a huge small thing in, in cleaning up. You know, we always talk about beautification and that whatnot, but some way to hold accountable to keep that stuff tidied up. So.
Point.
Um, I think that would be the first step is to get it on that agenda and maybe have some conversation around it and go from there.
You bet.
Any additional items, future agenda items?
Um, question, I guess, uh, Commissioner Haas brought up the water plan that has recently been completed. Where do you, where can the public go to see that?
So it's, it's, uh, online now. I think we've got all of the currently approved plans. So everything, water, livestock, grazing, et cetera. And so you can go online there. It's, um, got to remember, I have to go back and look exactly where you can find it, but, um, because there's a lot of data there. But one of the things we've put is that there's a community tab and we try to put anything related to the community they want to read about it would go to the community tab. And so, for example, all the Grass Valley stuff and the Gold Country stuff is now got a link there. Uh, anybody what can read any of that data and, uh, same for the plans. Now, we do have a master plan. You can usually find that under the Planning Department. So you'll see, it'll say master plan in there and you can go click on that and that has the master plan in there as well.
Yeah, and that's where all of the upgrades and changes to our, that we're doing right now with our master plan.
You know, I've got to go back and look at that. I don't know that we've been updating that since you, it's not technically part of the master plan yet. We're waiting till we get all of them completed and then we'll do it, because we have to do an ordinance update to include them into the master plan. So right now they're just sitting off by themselves under land, public land use plans.
Yeah, the idea behind that, when we first brought this up though, is that eventually, once we got the thing together, we would incorporate everything under an amendment, a denim, then, uh, an amendment to the master plan. So, um, and I, that was the plan, is it just to, you'd be able to open the master plan on all those, all those tabs that come up, so. Okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
Good. I would like some answers on what happened with the, um, the item I brought up in, in, uh, public hearing or public comment.
So, Mr. Jarrett, that one really is something I'm going to have to depend on counsel for if it's an investigation. You know, it's not something you normally do in a public setting. Uh, is it, should it be done by a third party? I mean, do I investigate somebody else? It goes back to all kinds of issues. So I don't think there's an easy answer on that one. So I'll get together with the District Attorney's Office and we'll figure out what, how we would go forward on that.
All right, I didn't have anything.
The only other one is the Tycana road issue.
Yeah, okay.
We talked about earlier, I got that down here as well.
All right.
Well, the.
Are we meeting today? Today's the day of the opening of the juvenile.
Correct.
Today's one thirty.
Yeah, one thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to have on our agenda the, the road issue that was brought up today.